Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. I am Heather Pathley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's March 16th, 2021 regular meeting, being conducted remotely, where all members of the City Council are in separate locations, and not at the City Hall Council chambers, will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels 189 and 190, and available at manistetv.org. City Council and city staff will have video and audio available for this meeting. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the City Council, the City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. We'll call the meeting to order. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zelinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Schmansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Deputy Clerk.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Planning and zoning Director.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
I think I have everyone.
Thank you, Heather. Concerns, comments, and agenda-related items. Each person in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk, by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It's very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll move on to the next person to phone. For those of you that don't have an agenda, the meeting discussion topics tonight are: Approval Minutes, Payroll Invoices, Consideration Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Street/Ground Level and Lower-Level Dwelling Standards, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Residential Dwelling Design Standards, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Patios, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Temporary Storage Structures, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address the Site Plan Review Committee, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Fences, Notification Regarding Next Work Session. Other agenda items include: Consideration of Ordinance 21-12 to Extend the Duration of a Provisional Permit Granted Under Chapter 866 and a Provisional License Granted Under Chapter 867 of the City of Manistee, Michigan-Certified Ordinances. Consideration of Authorizing to Pursue a Grant from 555 Fitness for Strength Training Equipment for the Park Department. Consideration of Authorizing the City Manager to Approve and Submit USDA Rural Development Draw Request and Invoices. And last, consideration of an Application to the Boards and Commissions. We'll now take public comments on agenda-related items, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Heather?
Okay, we have a lot of members of public, so I'm going to ask that you press *9 to raise your hand, or if you're on an iPad or computer, click the button to raise your hand, and then I will call on each of you individually. You will press *.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
I would like to remove one item from the consent agenda.
We're not quite to the point yet, Linda.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, it looks like Heather froze up. So, members of the public, if you would like to make a comment, please hit *9 to raise your hand, and *6 to unmute yourself.
Okay, I think I'm back.
Okay, I asked people to push *9 to raise their hand. I do see we have a few.
Yes, all right. Thank you for doing that, Laura. I don't know what happened. I froze up there. Okay. So, the first one I see, I'm going to ask, it says millennial decor. I have asked to unmute. If you hit *6, that should unmute you.
Hello.
Please state your name and address.
Yep, my name is Madeline Fitzsimmons. My address is 307 Second Avenue. I just wanted to say that I am against the extension of the for the provisional stuff for the marijuana businesses. I just think that if someone has if they're ready, then they're ready and they're gonna do it. But if someone hasn't done anything for their building yet, then I think that they won't do anything anytime soon, so might as well let another business get in there. And that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Telephone number ending in 4547. Press *6 to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Ashley Patricas. I'm an attorney with Michigan Cannabis Lawyers. We are actually located in Lansing.
Did you want our address still?
No, but if you could spell your last name?
Yep, it's P as in Paul, E, T, R, I, C, H, E, S.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our senior partner Joshua Culvert has spoken before you in the past. At this time, I would like to read a letter on behalf of our client. Dear members of City Council, I am writing to you all again regarding my concerns on how you have handled recreational marijuana licenses. The process has been flawed from the outset. Michigan legislation states that if a municipality limits the number of licenses available, there must be a competitive process intended to select applicants who are best suited to operate in compliance with this act within the municipality. That is directly quoted from NCL 333.27959. This never took place, and although I am the only applicant that is a resident, owns multiple properties within the city, and owns operating cannabis businesses, I ended up dead last in licensing. It will soon be 15 months since you awarded out five recreational licenses, and only two applicants have managed to open up dispensaries in that time. Standing in line on a first-come, first-served basis clearly did not work to determine who should receive a license. One applicant, Dune Grass, was able to pick up two of these licenses to keep competition out. They have made no progress on their second property, and this license should have been available as of January 1st. Had the license been awarded to someone like myself, someone ready and capable of opening a recreational retail location, the city could have been provided with an additional $27,000 in revenue from its share of the state's excise tax on marijuana. My partners and I have been patiently building out our medical provisioning center while awaiting one of the recreational retail licenses to become available. It is incredibly unfair to be extending timelines for businesses that did not even start building out until the end of 2020, or for those that have made no progress. I am sure you have all been watching the ongoing litigation in Traverse City and Berkeley on their processes, where judges have determined the cities did not determine licenses consistent with state law. Further, there is argument that local ordinance cannot restrict or deny a recreational retail license to an already existing retail facility licensed under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. A municipality may not adopt an ordinance that restricts a marijuana retailer from operating within a single facility or from operating at a location shared with a marijuana facility operating pursuant to the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. This is again quoted from NCL 333.27956. Since we have already been issued a medical retail license by the city, it appears that any further limitation on Med's Cafe from also operating a recreational retail facility would be contrary to state law. As a minority partner, I have been able to keep my partners from filing a lawsuit against the City of Manistee to date by focusing on our other projects. I will not be able to do this if the city extends the date of the other applicants again. Our expectation is to receive a license on April 1st. The sixth applicant has done nothing with their property. Their ability to receive a license should have also expired on January 1st. I urge you all to act in the city's best interest and allow for Med's Cafe to receive a recreational retail license on April 1st. City Council members should not be determining who the winners and losers are in a free market, especially without following the processes laid out by the State of Michigan regarding cannabis. City staff has been encouraging you all for months to change the ordinance to better serve the city, and many in the community are now questioning the council's motives in this endeavor. It really upsets me that a solution for my business could not have been figured out after months of communication. I have been told numerous times by many of you that I would get an opportunity, and then the opposite happens at meetings that I attend. The team of litigators that my partners have retained believe this would be a straightforward case that would easily be resolved in our favor. It is still my hope that common sense prevails and that we can fairly be awarded a license. Otherwise, I will be able to do little to prevent my partners from initiating litigation. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Ryan Fitzsimmons. At this time, I would ask that any comments or questions be directed back to Joshua Culvert with Michigan Cannabis Lawyers. Thank you.
I have Mr. Wisnewski with his hand raised. I'm sorry, I think I remuted you. There you go.
All right, thank you very much. Trevor Wisnewski, Keego Harbor, Michigan. We are the owners of 240 Arthur Street, and we were awarded a recreational adult use and a medical license. We submitted a couple letters asking for an extension for our build-out. Specifically, we may be a little unique as to the other properties where we have already now applied for our state license and have been told by our inspector that they're about six to eight weeks out on inspections. And we just gracefully requested a 30- to 60-day extension just so we can get our state inspections completed. You know, we are at the finish line on our project, and we have not been sitting around, and we have spent a lot of money getting to this point. And we are ready to open next month, but we are just in the process right now at the state, which is the very last step of securing our licensing at our state level. And that's where we're at, and we kindly and gracefully request an extension, at least for our property, because we are at the finish line. We're just waiting on the final documents from the state of Michigan to be able to open. Thank you.
I have one more person with their hand raised. Last name, LaRoche.
Hello, my name is Jacob LaRoche. I reside at 217 South Jefferson and Lowell, Michigan. I just had three questions for you, the first being, why did these applicants get extensions while other two applicants were able to open, and a third just passed their final inspection for a medical dispensary? My second is, why does the city protect in the interest of these companies instead of maximizing the tax revenue they could be receiving by increasing the total number of recreational dispensaries? The third question is, why is City Council more prepared to predict who will be successful in the free market when your process has produced only two operators in the last 14 and a half months? That's all I have. Thank you.
I still have several members of the public that are out there. I'm just gonna give one more opportunity to raise your hand for comments. Press *9. If you would like to make a comment. I have telephone number ending in 9945. Please press *6 to unmute yourself, and state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Robert McCurren. I'm the owner and CEO of the organization, The Wellflower, that's proceeding with the build-out of the cannabis retail location at 50 Arthur. We are obviously in favor of having the extension like the previous caller. We are within days of getting our certificate of occupancy inspection to open the business. We asked for an inspection for obvious reasons during the COVID, you know, entire period. We've had delays for a variety of reasons, which I think everybody understands pretty clearly, mostly in the realm of getting contractors and work done in the COVID environment. But that being said, we built out a beautiful facility. It's ready to go. We've got a great organization. We have retail in Big Rapids and a handful of other locations in the state that are close to opening, but Manistee is gonna be really our flagship store in northern Michigan. And I think everyone that gets a chance to see that location, if you're in the community, you've seen the significant development of that site that's happened during this time period, and we would have certainly been an operation at this point had we not been dealing with the pandemic. So, I, as the previous speaker said, just respectfully request an extension for enough time for us to just get through this last inspection process. There's no question as to whether or not we'll get through the state approval and licensure very rapidly once we have our occupancy and we'll be ready to go and be a great partner with the City of Manistee. I don't want to get too deep into all the other questions, concerns about the number of licenses. I'll just say that there is a significant investment in going in early in a community, and we are seeing in some communities in Michigan that have gone unlimited, really a ridiculous number of dispensaries in a small location, which I'm all for the free market, but there are concerns about the fact that you may have such a dash in the unique perspective of this business in this time point, that you'll have a whole bunch of businesses open that simply can't make it in communities of the size that we're talking about. And I do believe that everyone deserves a fair shot, and the people that get a medical license should have a pathway to recreational, but we don't want unlimited. That won't be good for the community and for this, and for our businesses, obviously. But that's obviously up for the council to determine. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that'd like to make a comment? Press *9 to raise your hand. I've got, oh, there's one more. Go ahead. State your name and address, please.
Hi, this is Joseph Nav. So, I'm the owner of 24 and 26 Arthur. At the time of the applications, when they were due over a year ago, we stood in line and attempted to get a, I'm sorry?
We've got some background noise somewhere.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. I'm gonna mute who I think is, okay, go ahead.
At the time of the application process, we waited in line, and obviously, we did not get one of the recreational licenses. At this point in time, I mean, we own a property that really there's nothing that we can do with it. And I understand that you guys want to limit how many recreational licenses come into the city, but relatively speaking, I can't imagine anybody's gonna open up a location with a medical license just because the customer base is not there. And so, if you don't increase the number of recreational licenses, you're not gonna get any medical licenses, because I can assure you, nobody's gonna open up at the location that we own, because it's just not worth it, if not financially feasible. So, I'm not in favor of unlimited licenses. I agree with the gentleman before me that too many licenses will hurt the other parties who are trying to be in business, but I definitely think that there has to be more, because otherwise, an owner of a property such as myself is just gonna be sitting on a dead piece of property, and I don't know what else to do with it. Thank you.
Okay, last chance to raise your hand. I think we've gotten almost everyone. Press *.
Laura, are you out there?
I am, yeah. Okay, something just happened, and it all went away for me. So, am I back?
Yep, you're here.
You're back.
I don't know what's happening. I apologize. Okay, so, I will just give one last chance for comments. I think somebody else just, do I have another hand raised? I want to make sure I didn't lose anybody.
I don't see any.
Oh, okay. I think we're all set, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda, all items marked with an asterisk. From the consent agenda, considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: Approval Minutes, Payroll Invoices, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Street/Ground Level and Lower-Level Dwelling Standards, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Residential Dwelling Design Standards, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Patios, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Temporary Storage Structures, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Site Plan Review Committee, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Fences, Notification Regarding Next Work Session. Is there any council member that'd like an item from the consent agenda removed?
I would. Consideration of Tax Amendments to Zoning Ordinance to Address Residential Dwelling Design Standards.
Okay, we'll remove that. We'll remove B from the consent agenda and put that under unfinished business. Is there anybody else? Hearing none as your motion to accept the agenda with the exception, the consent agenda with the exception of Section B.
Schmansky, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any other comments? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
He's muted.
Yes.
And Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Under unfinished business, Consideration of Tax Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Address Residential Dwelling Design Standards. Staff were instructed to develop language that would set standards for residential dwellings within the residential district. Language has been approved by the planning commission. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. This ordinance was introduced at the March 2nd, 2021 meeting, and could be adopted at this time. At this time, council could take action to adopt zoning ordinance Z21-02 with the proposed tax amendments addressing standards for residential dwellings. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Bachman. Schmansky, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I've been thinking a lot about the MAPS proposal, the bond issue that's coming up, and with the possibility of them deciding between now and Election Day what the status will be of the property where Jefferson School now sits. To be perfectly honest, I would think that I've heard enough voices stating the fact that they would like to see some residential housing there and that they would like some young families there. Knowing that it's a little bit cheaper to build up rather than horizontally, I would like to not pass this zoning amendment until we see how the vote goes on May 4th. I want to leave the possibility open for some creativity. If somebody wants to come in as a developer, do something a little more modern, maybe solar panels, maybe something that would be attractive to younger families. And I think it's important that we allow some room for creativity within our city.
Is there anybody else?
Mike and Zach, would this amendment eliminate or restrict a contractor from coming in and making a development with two-story facilities? Or multi-stories, you know, split-level facilities?
No. Basically, you could come in as a multiple dwelling. There's innovative design with mixed use as well, depending on if they come in as a planned unit development or, you know, otherwise. You know, really, this discussion was had at the planning commission level where we discussed some properties and, you know, maybe that what current thought about what a property should look like or be was, you know, we were being too restrictive. This was an argument that was brought up. And we actually went back and we looked at the design standards we were looking to implement, and we lessen them. We made them less restrictive, allowing for innovative designs. But the city does a really good job in their in their zoning ordinance of allowing flexibility to the developers. You know, in a lot of cases, if I could share my screen real quick, it was at this point that, back in July 30th of 2020, that we actually had a building come in the town that brought up this discussion. And I'm gonna show you guys what is coming into the city and why this design standard conversation happened. So, give me one second. All right, can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so this was a design standard conversation that happened about a residential construction of 960 square feet principal structure on a lot of record. It was less than 35 feet high, and it met all the requirements of the zoning ordinance as it currently stands. We have no ability within the current zoning ordinance to stop this kind of structure from coming in. So,
And that's a house.
That is a house. And this house has actually been permitted. It will be coming in on 439 Ninth Street, so coming soon. So, that's when we were directed to look at the design standards and implement something along with the other building that's on Bryant Avenue, where the garage kind of faces an awkward direction. Currently, without design standards, there's no way to do this. If you guys are looking, or you would like to send it back down to the planning commission to modify the design standards, I, you know, I understand that, and, you know, we're more than willing to do that. But, you know, there is currently no way to stop this. So, if people want to come in and put this in, they can.
May I ask a question? On those two examples that you gave, those lots may have been a little, they may have had the right square footage, but they may have been a little bit more awkward to work with, and maybe that's why they chose the designs that they chose. To have two examples only just doesn't feel right to me to pass this amendment. And like I said, I am worried that I'll send the wrong message to anybody who wants to come in and do something creative with the Jefferson School property should that bond issue pass, and should the schools decide that that's what they want to do with that property, is to sell it to a developer.
Right. And
Go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry.
And just to reiterate, like, we are, you know, we're just here to facilitate. So, if council feels that, you know, it needs to go back to the planning commission, we're more than willing to take it back there. But in the meantime, these billings are unrestricted to come into the area. So, I realize that you know, we have You know, we have, we have walked them back, the restrictions on there. Um, the, the, the Jefferson School property is, if it came in as a major property or a PUD, wouldn't be restricted by any design besides what would go to your planning commission, um, under that PUD. And it would be on them to do, you know, help facilitate, you know, what they would like that area to look like, um, the designs, you know, walking paths within that area as well as the density of those structures within that PUD. You know, so if, if something along those lines are, are being brought in, by all means, you know, that's something the planning commission would look at as a special use within that district. And, you know, but in the meantime, if there are no design standards and, you know, residential lots and single, these are allowed to come in. And you, you do have multi, multiple unit lots available to come in. Uh, I mean, sorry, parcels are able to come in as special uses within residential areas within the city as far as like multi, multiple-use dwellings or what you would consider like a townhouse. So, there, there is the ability to do that. It's just much more controlled as a, as a, um, a special use. Where in this case, these are permitted uses which never go before the planning commission. And as your zoning administrators, we have no ability to say, hey, this really doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. Um, that's a metal structure. It doesn't have, you know, windows facing it. It resembles a pole barn. We don't have any ability to say no to that. So, that's when the planning commission decided to implement some form of design standards. But I do understand your concern.
I would like to point out another thing. Uh, if, if you would look at the assessed value of the homes that are on Grove Street, which started out as, basically, it started out as low-income housing. It's turned into lovely property. I know the houses do resemble each other, but the assessed value on it has grown significantly. So, they were a little bit out of character when they were first built and it's been absorbed into the area and, and people just go by and they don't really feel that there's anything dramatically different about it because they're used to seeing it and they're kept up very well. So, I just wanted to point that out as well. I'm just reluctant to put any obstacles in the way of anybody looking at that Jefferson property.
This is, this is Schmansky. Can I? Again, the planning commission took a lot of time and, and looking at this and I don't think there's any restrictions at all for any developer to come in to Manistee based on these. But what it does stop is somebody who's really coming in to take advantage of the fact that we have no restrictions. And again, I don't think anyone would be satisfied to have that steel pole barn built in that residential area. And again, you can tell, this is, this is a, a place for a summer resident to be able to park his RV or his big boats uh, and spend two weeks here, uh, and then go away. And not really care about the effect or the impact on the neighborhood. Uh, I, I don't think that, uh, we can wait until the decision is made on the Jefferson parcel. It could be years. Because again, nothing's going to happen if the village doesn't go through. So, so I, I think we really need to move forward with this. We should have done this probably years ago. Uh, otherwise, we wouldn't be facing the issues. I do agree though, Linda, on the one, the, the design was based on the property li, layout. But not, not the second one, where you're seeing the steel building. And like I said, the restrictions that we're requesting from the planning commission are really minimal, just to keep really problem, uh, buildings coming up in the wrong area. And I think there is as limited as we can possibly get without uh, interfering with anybody's creativity.
Well, I would like to think so. I would be more assured if we didn't pass it.
I, I actually think that we need this ordinance just because, I mean, you see on Broad Avenue, there's, you know, huge, nice homes. I mean, two hundred and fifty thousand and then you're next to a trailer. Like, like, I understand what you're saying about creativity, but you're not going to be happy if you've got a vacant lot and some guy built a house that looks like a mushroom next to you just because we allowed it. So, I think there needs to be some sort of common ground with it.
Is there anybody else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
No.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Before we get into new business, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the planning commission and all its members and staff for all their hard work and doing all these tax amendments and keeping the best interest of the city in mind. Thank you very much, Mick and Ja, Jack, Zachary. Uh, thanks a lot for all your work. Appreciate it. New business, consideration of ordinance 21-12 to extend the duration of a provisional permit granted under chapter 866 and provisional license granted under chapter 867 of the City of Manistee, Michigan Codified Ordinance. The City of Manistee Codified Ordinance provides the provisional medical marijuana facility permits and provisional recreational marijuana established licenses respectively are valid for a period of one year from the issuance and may not be renewed as a result of the coronavirus pandemic and its impact on the ability for provisional permits and provisional licenses, license holders to complete construction projects because of restrictions initially imposed by the executive order of the Michigan governor. The general unavailability of contractors able to perform work, delays in delivery of construction material and delays in obtaining state approval, approvals required for issuance. Parties that were issued provisional permits and provisional licenses have been unable to secure final inspections from the state and issues, issuance of their their state of Michigan license. The inability to secure the state license makes it impossible to obtain a final permit and final license from the city within one year duration from the provisional permits and provisional licenses issued by the city. The city previously extended the duration of existing provisional permits and provisional licenses to April 1st, 2021. With the same delay that required that the extension continued to exist because of the, the construction difficulties encountered by provisional permits and provisional license holders is appropriate to extend the current, currently issued provisional marijuana provision, provisional, provisioning centers permits and provisional marijuana retailer license to July 1st, 2021. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it couldn't be adopted at the rec, next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance 21-12 to extend the duration, duration of provisional permits granted under chapter 866 and provisional licenses granted under chapter 867 to the City of Manistee, Michigan Codified Ordinance. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Bachman, for the sake of discussion, yes.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I have, I have a, a couple of questions. Um, I heard you discuss earlier, is there someone who has a license and done nothing to get a building ready? Is that true? Or have all the people have, have not opened, are they cultivating open? What's the status of that?
There's two that, um, are in the process of building out and are very close. Um, that's been confirmed by our building official. Um, and we also, uh, Heather weigh in on this, but I, we've got notification from at least one of those two that, that they've been approved for a license through the state subject to final inspection of their building. Heather, was the other one in the similarly situated?
Yes, so there's two, like, as you said, there's two that are very close to finishing. Um, I got an email from the state on one. I can't remember which one, which one it was. Um, but they're basically just confirming that they were in compliance with everything with the city as far as our ordinance. And they are. So, I, I expect that one to be, you know, finishing up very soon. Um, and the other one won't be far behind the third one. Um, I, I don't know the status of, the exact status of that property. I don't believe um, they're near what these two are with their build-out.
And I would concur with that from, um, from Heather on the status of the third. However, I think if we're, we, we, if council's entertaining extending these to July 1st, they should treat all applicants the same. And it just gives the third one a much shorter period of time, uh, to get up and running.
So, you believe that the ordinance requires to treat all of the same? We couldn't look at them individually? Is that what you're saying there?
I, I would, I, and I'll defer to the city attorney, but, well, we've discussed this, that we felt it was in the best interest if we treat all three license holders the same.
Okay. You know, this is Mick Schmansky and, you know, again, I've been thinking about this, um, and, and I, I have a concern with the fact that, you know, we've already given one extension for COVID. And I get it where, you know, if you're waiting for the state inspector and everything is out of your control, uh, that we should be somewhat lenient. But I, I, I don't think that it, it would require us to necessarily, uh, you know, be willing to, to grant carte blanche to everyone. That may not have made any investment at all in, into pursuing an additional, uh, operation. So, I, I would suggest and ask, uh, our attorney, would it be possible for us to basically amend this to say that we will grant an extension, uh, only to those who are awaiting inspection from the state to complete their marijuana licensing?
That is certainly an option that you could pursue, yes.
And, and I would feel more comfortable with that. I, I think that's fair and reasonable considering we've given everyone, uh, an extension already. So, now we're really saying, okay, everyone has a same fair shot at getting their build-out. Now, again, because of, uh, a backlog, uh, from the state, we're going to give you just, you know, a, a small, uh, window of opportunity to complete your process. But if there hasn't been any significant investment to point, then I don't see why we would, we would be willing to, uh, to just continue to extend. Just my thought.
Any other thoughts?
Can we change this so it extends the two that are waiting for state approval and not extend the, the one that has two?
Well, uh, my suggestion is that we would word it that we grant an extension, uh, for the, um, candidates waiting for final state approval. Uh, and and then not extend, uh, to anyone who's not waiting for final approval between now and July. If they don't get a final approval by July, not, not a start or a build, but a final approval by July, then it's a moot point.
Mr. Schm...
I, I think what you, what you're looking to do here would be a motion to amend the current motion. And, and I'd want you to be specific, if you could, about the two that you're talking about extending. So, if you're, and, and Heather may know the names of those two. Uh, the, the third one, which I think all of us are discussing is the, uh, Doongrass Group that has a second, um, provisional permit. You know, that they haven't, and I don't know where they stand in, in their process. But that's the, I think that's the one that we are talking about not extending. So, a, a, a motion to amend the current motion, along the lines of, of what Councilman, uh, Schmansky's indicated.
I would be willing to make that motion to amend it.
Well, George, is that what it's saying, legal jeopardy if we do that? I mean, do we open ourselves up to issues of by, by blocking some and approving some? Because they want to do them all the same? I'm confused a little bit here.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the, the thought here was that, and, and my and Heather's discussion was that, um, the same COVID issues exist for all of the applicants, not just the two that have, you know, progressed as far as they have. Granted, I, I don't believe that, uh, the, uh, the third one that we're discussing has done much with regard to construction, at least that you can see. Um, I don't know where they stand in any other process or in their plan. I know that they've expressed, uh, I believe, and Thad, to you, that they've expressed that they believe they can still comply with the July 1st deadline to have their business up and running. And their intention is to have a delivery business, not a, um, open, uh, sale retail business. Uh, I think that's what they indicated, Thad.
So, reality, George, if we, if we say, um, we approve it to anybody who's going to be pending a final approval July 1st, it's kind of the same deal, right? Because they don't have it by July 1st, they don't have it, right? Does it really change anything by saying that?
Well, yeah, it, that's why I was saying you have to identify specifically the properties you're talking about, because if that's the language in the amendment,
There's no difference.
They say, we're just allowing all three.
I agree. Yeah, okay. But what I'm saying is that we make the language say that we're waiting, that we're only extending final approval to one July.
Yeah, but, and that's all, that's, I think that's the initial motion, what the initial motion.
It is. It gives until July 1st to get final approval on all of them that are on the table. Final approval for a recreational marijuana license.
And, and that's what the initial motion, I think, provides.
Right. Yep.
So, if, if Doongrass is a, is, if they're a delivery service, are they just waiting on approval from the state or what, what are they waiting on?
You know, I'm, I'm not familiar with where they are in, in that process. Uh, the, it is, it is a different business model to have a delivery business and, and again, Thad, maybe you can correct me, because I don't think I've seen the communication from them. But my understanding is that, uh, their intent is not to have a retail business where someone could go into the store and purchase, uh, recreational marijuana. But their, their structure would solely be to house the marijuana that would then go out on, uh, delivery. That delivery, uh, authorization comes from the state, does not have anything to do with the city. Um, and so, if they are able to get their, uh, retailer license, uh, then they'll be aligned from the state to get a, uh, delivery authorization. So, I understand.
But...
I don't know where they are in that whole process of, uh, construction.
Mr. Schm, from what I understand, uh, maybe I'm mistaken, but as I understood the law, that any provisioning center can apply for a delivery. They don't have to have a separate license.
The, the...
Or a separate facility.
You, you, uh, an existing license holder could have a delivery business. My understanding is that Doongrass intends to have a separate, uh, recreational adult business that is solely going to be dealing with delivery.
But, but it's not required. They don't need a separate license, from what I understand. They could do that...
They could have delivery, they could get delivery authorization for their existing license, yes.
Correct. They're doing it now, according to their side. They're already delivering, according to their side. So, so this is literally and clearly an intent just to, uh...
Hold the license.
Hold and hoard a license.
They have a second building that they do have a site, uh, special use permit on, though, that they are... So, they do have that.
And they have to build out to the special use permit?
Correct, yes.
By one July?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And I, you know, if council's interested in, you know, passing this ordinance as written, And, you know, if council's interested in, you know, passing this ordinance as written and as the motion exists, I would just somehow make it clear that this would be the, maybe the final extension for this, these three license holders. Because when we suggested council extend it to April 1st, we didn't envision that there'd be another spike in the COVID cases in Michigan and all those other associated issues. So, you know, looking back, you know, maybe we should have done it to July 1st. But I feel, you know, letting them have until July 1st, all three of them, and if they can, if they can open, they open, if not, they lose their provisional licenses.
Okay.
Mr. Saylor, do we need to add anything to this amendment to stipulate that no more, no more extensions?
No, no, I think the ordinance itself says when it ends, so the, you know, the existing motion does have that as part of it.
Is there anybody else with any comments?
I have one, Mayor. So the, I will just let council be aware that a three-month extension was given on special use permits for marijuana-related activities on these parcels. I believe that expires at the end of the year. So this is a continuation or an extension and another entity wishes or, you know, hasn't built out yet. It puts them in also a very tight crunch to meet the requirements of their special use permit, so.
Okay.
But I just thought I'd share that, that they do expire, I believe, at the end of the year, if they're not built out.
Okay, good.
Anybody else? Hearing non, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of authorization to pursue a grant from 555 Fitness for Strength Training Equipment for the Fire Department. The City of Manistee Fire Department is pursuing a 555 Fitness Grant, which is a non-matching grant worth up to $14,000 to procure updated physical fitness equipment in the Fire Department. At this time, council could take action to authorize the Manistee Fire Department to pursue the 2021 555 Fitness Grant Package, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Grubowski.
Through a second.
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion?
I'm happy to see this grant come across the table, I'm glad to see we have a CrossFit instructor at the fire gate, I was not aware of that, so good job for the project, congratulations, hope you win.
Chief Cameron, do we have, do we have equipment now, physical fitness equipment in the fire station?
Yes, we currently do, we have some weightlifting equipment. This gentleman also has brought in some of his own equipment that they use downstairs, such as sandbags, stuff of that nature, so he is a, he is a very hardcore instructor, and he's doing great things here at the station, he's really kind of motivating a lot of the guys to get in, and I think it's a good thing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing non, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing the city manager to approve and submit USDA Rural Development Draw Request and Invoices. USDA Rural Development requires that invoices for construction projects they fund be approved and submitted as a draw request on forms that they provide. City council can approve the invoices and draw requests, or they can delegate the city manager, who is the city author, the city manager who is the city authorized representative. Delegating to the city manager will ensure that the city can meet the contractual requirements of the payment to the contractors. At this time, council could take action to authorize the city manager to approve and submit USDA Rural Development Draw Request and Invoices, is there a motion?
Grubowski, I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Beaton will second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion, comments?
You're muted, Mayor.
I must have bumped it, okay, is there any discussion? Hearing non, please take the roll.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Compensation Commission, Historic District Commission, Pay Commission, Pre-Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Pre-Commission are two vacancies, one term ending 12/21/22 and one term ending 12/31/23. These are mayor appointments. I'd like to appoint John M. Haugey of 450 Cedar Street to the term ending 12/31/23. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there support?
Support.
I have a motion of support, any discussion or comments?
Hearing non, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and announcements. Tonight, we have two, we have one from the police department and one from the fire department. First up, Fire Chief Cameron.
All right, let me share the screen here. Okay, first of all, I'd like to say, everybody can see that at Manistee City Fire EMS?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank you the opportunity for, let me present the 2020 Annual Report here for the Fire Department. It's been a crazy year, we started out here, we had a lot of new challenges. Some of the new challenges ended up being able to, or for us to obtain PP and appropriate numbers. We had a lot of help with our county emergency manager, Jason Torrey, along with hospital personnel such as Dr. Robinson and his wife Tina, they really were instrumental in helping us get underway, we always, we had the gear, just not inadequate numbers at which we were running into. We ended up with having new ways of operation, kind of a new mindset, the way we were going into approaching patients, we started doing them at one at a time where we would just meet with one person, try to cut down on any of our exposures. We did end up having a potential exposure, and we did have a lot of the guys that were off for a period. And the other firemen in the station really stepped up, they did a great job, got us through our two weeks. Again, I'm very proud of what work that they've done and really stepped up and helped us out and made the station carry through, still continuing our high level of care. At the Fire Department, we provided antibody testing before pre-vaccination for the Fire Department and the Police Department, just gave them a better understanding of what they're, excuse me, what they're looking at before taking the vaccination. In the Fire Department here, we received vaccinations on December 23rd for our first round, and followed up the 21 days later with the with the follow-up. Our second vaccination date was on 12/29, and that took place a month later for its secondary, so we have majority of our firemen were in the upper 80% covered at this time. There, is that slide changing for us?
No.
Not yet.
There we go. Statistics for the year, for the 2020, we had 1,273 calls, we're up just a little bit by 6.8%. We had mutually given out with, we have auto mutually with Manistee Township and Philer Township. Total mutual aids given out, and that includes medical as well, we're 80. And then we had mutual aids received, which at times when we're out on calls, we have the ambulance come in or other responders at 27. Our average response time is four minutes and 38 seconds, that's anywhere that we've gone out on them, 840 medical responses. We had more responses, however, these are what's recording our EMS calls. We took in two revenue sharing grants last year, Cycle 1, which was a collaborative grant for turnout gear for $44,685, that covers our entire fire station, with us purchasing a couple sets, getting new turnout gear for this year, taking a little delay with COVID, but they should be coming in here within the next month or two. We followed up with Cycle 2 to complete the ensemble with helmets and boots. We collaborated with Manistee Township Fire Department, we provided them some boots and helmets, and in turn, they provided us rope bringing, this way we could try to get a better purchase price for buying a bigger number of boots, this wasn't a huge number, but it was, it's the start to better collaboration with the neighboring departments. We did some fire rescue training, the pandemic opened up a little bit to let us get out. Here in this one, we did some rope rescue training down by the river, and we did some advanced stabilization and vehicle extrication, and this one, we partnered with Manistee Township and a few guys from East Lake, just give us the opportunity to merge with with them and allow them to have a better understanding of what we're doing when we get there, and they can help out, especially with our levels of staff. We had a specialized training, this one here was to simulate a basement window egress, so we have two firemen here that that window they sliding through, he had to take off his air pack and push him, and push it through, and then his partner pushes through. This just kind of mocks if someone goes into a basement, gets stuck, different methods in which we train in getting out of a situation. We sent our two new guys to Lake Odessa for ice rescue training, they got certified through Michigan Ice Rescue Concepts, it was firefighter Nelson and Rob Biter, and they really enjoyed that evolution, got them out of the station, got them into some outside training, and really made it a good experience for them. Every year, we do annual testing, we have pump testing, ladder testing as well. As you can see here in the picture to the left, there are ladder trucks hooked up, it flows 2,000 gallons a minute, has to do this continuation for a period to keep its certification and rating. And then to the right, you can see that we, the third party comes in and they put a weight to it, and that deflection of the ladder, you can really see how much it strains it. This is done annually, and then it's, to pass certification, has to meet into its, has to come back to a normal level within a certain range. This here is our, I shouldn't say ours, it's nobody's, however, it's a picture of the ambulance that's very identical to the one we'll be getting delivered here, hopefully around the first part of July. It's a PL custom out of New Jersey, and it started being built this beginning of the month. And hopefully we'll take, like I say, hopefully we'll take possession around 7/1. Daily tasks we have around the fire station when we're not out on calls, this here shows John, he's our, the fitness guy. He's out doing hydrant pumping. We keep those pumped down in the fall to prevent freeze-ups. We run around 300 and some odd hydrants in the city, keeping them pumped out throughout the winter. We do vehicle checks, equipment checks, station maintenance, the guys do a lot around the station to keep it up and running and keep things operational. Same with equipment, we have one guy that goes out and does our building inspections, it's been a little slower with the pandemic, but we're working through that. We have a public education that was also slow this year, we still have continued our training, we've been doing multiple medical trainings, keeping up our certifications. And we've been doing a lot of birthday drive-bys, trying to make the best of the situation that's been going on, and trying to keep some of the residents happy and making the best of what we have. So in conclusion, on behalf of the Fire Department, we'd like to thank city council and all citizens for their support, and at this time, if there's anyone has any questions, I'd try to answer them for you.
Any questions, council?
I have a question. I know there were a few times when you were a little short of staff due to COVID, and I just wonder if if at some point it would be advantageous to the city to consider allowing the hiring of part-time firefighters, they don't have to be paramedics, so long as they're going out with paramedics, if that would help smooth things over, or if I'm just overreaching at this point, because I don't really know if you've got adequate coverage or not, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Yes, that would be very helpful, we do currently have the ability to bring on, I believe, four casual hires or four part-time hires, so that is an option, it's just whether, whether we get to the point of funding and that, that's always the sole source, so definitely would be able to, and hopefully the goal would be to get to a three-man crew. However, we'll see, that all depends on how financing goes and how, what the future holds.
Okay.
What is our staffing now?
Currently, we hold, we're currently in the process of hiring one, we currently have three shifts of two men on duty. So currently, we usually have a third man who's a floater, a swing, and he will cover in vacations, and that helps eliminate some of the overtime as well. Depending on what we end up hiring, if it's a paramedic, they're able to fit in a little quicker, and EMT, it's a little more limited, because depending on who takes off, we have to keep the appropriate staffing level obtained on the medic as far as a paramedic and an EMT or dual paramedics.
Okay. Chief Cameron, didn't you have an inspection this year?
We, we did have an, as far as the ambulance inspection,
Yes.
that's an annual inspection that we do, and we passed that with flying colors, it was a, it was good, it was a little different this year, it was remote. And so it was, it was a different process, we also, I didn't mention on there, we did have a ISO rating change, went from a five to a four, a lot of that was mutual aid assistance with Manistee Township and their automatic mutual aid that was brought in within that five-year period, as well as them purchasing a ladder truck.
Thank you. Great job.
Anybody else? Thank you, chief.
You bet, thank you.
Now, chief, glass, you're up.
Thank you, let me see if I can share my screen here. Can everyone see that?
No.
No?
No.
There we go. Click the button. I went out.
There we go.
Okay, thank you members of council for an opportunity to speak with us tonight and to present you what our officers have been through and what we've done the past year. Getting started, as Chief Cameron stated COVID impacts, our department was significantly impacted at the end of March 2020. Over half of our officers, within a matter of days, were unavailable to fill schedule.
leaving just a few officers who really shouldered a schedule for a few weeks, and certainly commend them, and that was no easy task. The only silver lining to that whole march was that we, in February, began developing policies and practices and sustainability schedules so that when it actually hit us, so to speak, in March, it wasn't a mad dash, and it wasn't chaotic. We were able to somewhat smoothly transition into our sustainability schedule, our practices that we had established. One of the major procedures was that we really scaled back our proactive police work and tried to limit human contact at traffic stops, non-emergency complaints, things of that nature. And then overall, throughout the year twenty twenty, our officers worked a modified or sustainability schedule for approximately five months out of the twelve months. Just some statistics here. Probably one of the most surprising things are calls per service. In the months of February, March, April, took a significant nosedive, but as the summer months came, they rebounded pretty well. That number, dispatch complaints was a little bit higher than I anticipated. So certainly during the summer months, it rebounded. Self-initiated was down, as you can see, from twenty nineteen, written complaints, and then probably the biggest impact with scaling back productivity, our tickets were down, arrests were down, and then our accidents were down two sixty-four to one thirty-two. Investigations, and these are categories we highlight. Criminal sexual conduct was down. Last year was a record year for us with thirty-three. I think twenty-one's probably the on par number. Non-aggravated assaults were down. Burglary stayed about the same. Larceny's were down slightly, as well as MDOPs, just a snapshot of investigations from twenty twenty. Light enforcement, as council knows, a new system of enforcement, twenty twenty, involved breaking up the city into districts. Our officers investigated two hundred and fifty-eight cases of blight with a hundred and seventy-five resolutions taking place at the time of this presentation, which was sometime February eighth, three were still in progress. And as you know, we continuously evaluate our efforts to modify and improve those efforts. Something I want to highlight is we have the Run the Pier event that happens every year. Well, a thousand dollars from that is donated to public safety training in Manistee County. It has been for the past two years. We've certainly taken advantage of that. Last year, in nineteen, it was interview interrogation training. This is for officers, city, county, state, tribal. This year, it was courtroom testimony training. We were able to get an expert in here and, and give our officers the tools to be successful when they have cases that go to court. One of our revenue sharing grants, we were able to obtain FN three oh three, which is a less lethal launcher, and, and it's a shoulder-held, compressed-air-powered launcher. The rounds you see up top are about the size of a quarter, and some of them are just impact rounds. Some produce irritant, the irritants, that irritates the nasal. And what this really did for us is give us another tool in our toolbox that we could utilize to de-escalate situations. We sent Sergeant Van Sekel, who is now our department instructor, but we're very fortunate to have that tool. In an effort to get our staffing levels back up, we, we hired Chase Barber. I think he was introduced to council, and that was a big step for us to get our staffing levels back where they need to be. He's since completed FTO, is working by himself, and getting good reports from the officers he's working with. The vacancy of Detective Sergeant had left, we had a promotional process, a pretty competitive one. There were two officers that really rose to the top. The top officer was Kristen Goodspeed, who was promoted to Detective Sergeant. After twenty-five years of service, Sergeant Tom Bruce retired. Technically, we have some retirements and promotions that were just into January, but I think they're noteworthy, so I wanted to mention to council. Tom was a staple here, a big impact in our community, and he found an opportunity to work at neighboring department, and we're very happy for him. With that, our number two candidate in our promotional process, Doug Van Sekel, he was promoted to sergeant. And again, early January, but I think it's noteworthy. Also, something to mention that he was awarded the Medal of Bravery for his actions during a structural fire, August eleventh, two thousand twenty. And so this is the incident we're talking about, the highway bar. And something to mention here is that, you know, our then-acting detective Kirsten Goodspeed, along with other officers, really worked well coordinating with, you know, Chief Cameron, MSP, fire marshals, other officials, to really get this investigation to a good conclusion and identify a suspect and make an arrest, and then a pretty impressive amount of time. This was, it was a great effort by, you know, fire, police, different agencies, so we're pretty pleased with that result. If I can get this to play here. This is, this is just body cam footage of Officer, now Sergeant Van Sekel. And, and what the video shows, I want to show councils, he retrieved a woman from the upstairs apartment, he carried her to the sidewalk or the edge of the parking lot. What you're seeing is him turning around and looking at the fire. And so that's something that he went through, but also that's what our fire department faced. This is prior to their arrival, but when they arrived, that's what they had to deal with. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, we can illustrate that to council, to actually see that. I think it's important to have body cam videos to actually see it. A couple instances I want to go through, there are kind of major instances we've had in the city. October twenty-six, we had a shooting. It was this dispute between multiple subjects believed to be drug-related. Upon arrival, suspect, witnesses, victim all fled. A handgun was fired at multiple subjects. Thankfully, no one was, was injured with, with the fire. But our investigators or officers worked with multiple jurisdictions, worked with multiple drug task forces, were able to identify the suspect and procure a warrant for his arrest. And he's been subsequently arrested and has pending sentence on this incident. Again, another major incident we had was the Manistee River Channel incident. This is an example of a number of agencies working together. You had police, you had fire, Jeff McCool at DPW was out there, we had Coast Guard. We had dive teams from multiple sheriff's departments. We actually have victim services out there. And when you look at an incident like this, you look at it from two different aspects. One's the recovery efforts, and the other one is investigative efforts, and both worked well together. Our investigators were able to account for all persons involved and determine the cause of accident. So hopefully, that we were able to provide the families involved here with some kind of answers and hopefully some closure. December sixth, two thousand twenty, we had an incident on the roof of Family Dollar. A male subject was yelling and screaming and had threatened officers, claimed he had a gun, and then later determined he had a knife. And we had fire departments on scene. We had limited officers on scene. We were able to contain the incident. But looking at the tools and toolbox, we decided to contact the Northern Michigan Response Team, which is a response team who did a great job in being able to de-escalate that situation. We were able to take that subject from the roof on a snowy, icy morning without incident, without injury. So that was a good result in the way we de-escalated that. They did a great job. I will note, at one point, Chief Cameron was driving the ladder truck, and he had a tack team loaded up on the roof using the ladder truck, and so he got involved in that aspect as well. So the main thing is we were able to de-escalate this without any incident. On a positive note, we participated in a program called Stop the Squad Card. And what this was, was a private individual was able to raise funds and donate books to the police department to put books in our patrol cars to promote literacy in Manistee, Manistee County. And although COVID did negatively impact the rollout of this project, we have the books. We plan on still rolling this out when, when the situation allows and when comfort level allows. But we like this program really for two aspects. And one, it promotes literacy in Manistee County. Number two, the, the books will act as a, as a mechanism for our officers to have a positive interaction to these young people. And so we're very happy participating in this, and we look forward to utilizing this program moving forward so we can continue to have those positive interactions. And then to mention too, the police department, as well as the fire department, participated in Shop with a Hometown Hero, which is a great program sponsored by Meyer. Families are identified, and we sponsor families, providing presents to them, along with other law enforcement agencies in the county. And then on a local level, police and fire, we sponsor multiple families, and we donate from both unions, and we purchase presents. And, and you know, the, the purpose here is just, especially last year, was tough economically for a lot of people, and if we can add just a little bit of light in people's lives, that's what we're looking for, and I think we were able to do that. So I think it's an important thing to highlight what our officers do in that regard. And finally, I just want to say thank you for your support, council and the public, and I'll open it up for questions. Any questions, counsel? Any comments? Well, I personally want to thank both departments. I think we have a bunch of dedicated people who look after us every day. Your work, your dedication is much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you so much. With that, we'll go on to concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance via phone shall be recognized by the city clerk for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be read, will not be publicly read. Every person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. Heather, do you want to move on with that, and then go to official staff and council members? We appreciate it.
Okay. Again, for the members of public that are with us, press star nine to raise your hand if you have a comment. I see we still have a couple of you left. Again, star nine to raise your hand. And then star six to unmute. One more chance. Star nine. I'm not seeing anybody who is wanting to make comments, so we'll go on to officials and staff. City manager?
Nothing at this time.
City attorney?
Yeah, nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Finance director?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Police chief?
I mean, thank you so much.
Fire chief?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
City engineer?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
And planning and zoning?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes, Heather. First, I want to compliment the council for promoting Josh Glass and Mark Cameron, the chief. You obviously did a great job. You got the right people in the right seats on this bus. They're taking us in the right direction, so good job there. But my compliments also go out to them and their staff, but the entire city staff for getting through COVID this year, city hall staff, police, fire, DPW, water, sewer. I've encountered a number of city employees in the last several months, and everyone has got a good attitude, good smile on their face, and doing what's the best into the community. So somehow, someone's doing a great job, either it's councilor's staff or the city manager, but it's all working really well. I compliment you on that. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Beaton?
I think Councilmember Bachman said it best. I mean, I've been very impressed with how our city has managed with COVID nineteen and all the obstacles that have been thrown in our paths. So great job, and I know that, I, I'm going to say this about the planning commission and the planning department. I've never seen an organization work as hard as you guys, and I know that I, I challenged you on that one amendment, but I also give you a lot of respect and praise for a lot of the work that you've done. I've seen your five-and-a-half-hour meeting with the planning commission online, and it's, it's, I don't know how you guys are holding it together, but you're doing a great job. So thanks for that, even though we don't always agree. That's it.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes, I want to thank the police and fire. I worked with them for fifty-some years, and I know they work hard. I really like you, and I see you really waving to me on twelve feet tall. I, I thank them for their efforts. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
I've got nothing. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Schmansky? Oh, you're muted.
Again, thanks to the police and fire, and Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone.
And Mayor Zalinski?
I have nothing. Just thank you, everybody, for your input tonight. Appreciate all the comments. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
There's a second?
Second.
I got a motion in a second. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.